Thank you. Welcome to the regular board meeting, October 12th, 2021 of Merced City School District Board of Education. We will call to order at 6:02 PM. Clerk Kazakos, will you please call roll?
Alan Brooks. I see you, Mr. Brooks, but I can't hear you.
Present.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Jesse Espinoza?
Present.
Thank you. Shane Smith?
Present.
Bertie Olivares Kidwell?
I'm here.
And Jessica Kazakos, I am here.
Thank you. Would the community outreach specialists please introduce themselves?
Thank you, President. Ms. Olivares Kidwell. Buenas tardes a todos. Si usted nos está viendo y desea hacer un comentario y necesita interpretación en español, le podemos proveer interpretación si lo necesita. Gracias.
Thank you. Paloma Juan, anecdot me pita maña, maña y boi y monte lang. Se comen chinto faa wa pimia wa na. Tozat fekli un diña faa ken he globe de kin mia. Se comen chinto fisa kyu tono ta chat o, nanting.
Thank you. Niang jong ku ya chang fa ha to talu de Merced City School District. Ku niang chohu bo luchon shitan no lu talu cho pika tu ko sinku tokon de pe lu jijio tsa ha ulu mong. Ya ka sang ku ku talu cho ka session no cho ka no timu saito niang chohu kan jo jan de la screen. E klik ada mong la shiyaka molu nu talchi sangha no timu cho de ka globe icon. E shower ta chat niang chohu kan jo jan de la screen. Ochoa ta, back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, and for those of you that are joining us, know that we are simulcasting both in person and live for the remainder of the meeting, and we thank our community outreach specialists for doing the extra work necessary to make sure that all voices are heard. Now, let it be noted that Board Member Trustee Jessica Kazakos is participating remotely from the following location: 1901 Foltz Court, Merced, California 95341, from telephone 209-261-5092. Our closed session topics for tonight are: Public employee appointment, reassignment, discipline dismissal, release, and/or complaint; conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation and/or significant exposure to litigation; Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. conference with legal counsel, existing litigation; Conference with labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the Merced City Teachers Association conference with labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the Merced City Teachers Association and California School Employees Association, Chapter 530. and California School Employees Association, Chapter 530; conference with real property negotiator. Conference with real property negotiator. At this time in the meeting, At this time in the meeting, the public is invited to comment on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board the public is invited to comment on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board in accordance with board policy on the items listed for the closed session only. in accordance with board policy on the items listed for the closed session only. There will be an opportunity again for public comment when we return to open session. There will be an opportunity again for public comment when we return to open session. Comments from members of the public shall not exceed three minutes per individual Comments from members of the public shall not exceed three minutes per individual or a total of 20 minutes unless timelines are waived by a majority of the board. or a total of 20 minutes unless timelines are waived by a majority of the board. Ms. Winiger, do we have any callers for closed session items? Ms. Winiger, do we have any callers for closed session items?
We have no callers at this time, Madam President. We have no callers at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Winiger. Thank you, Ms. Winiger. We will now adjourn to closed session. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Remind you, we are broadcasting live, so what speaks that may be heard on screen. This is a reminder.
Can those of you in the audience hear me? Thank you. Welcome back everyone. We will call to order at 7:11 PM. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting that at least a portion of this MCSD board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953. In accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. I would now like to request that Board Member Jessica Kazakos respond to the following questions to confirm for a matter of record. Trustee Kazakos, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if they wish to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. I would now like to ask that any member of the board to speak up at this time if they have not been able to clearly hear Ms. Kazakos. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all board members present have indicated that they were able to hear Ms. Kazakos clearly. I would now like to advise the board and clerk that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. The Merced City School District Board of Education resumes in-person meetings starting tonight and continues to offer a virtual option for those that prefer to participate remotely. Actually, prior to doing that, just wanted to verify. Thank you for your patience. The Merced City School Board of Education resumes in-person meetings starting tonight and continues to offer a virtual option for those that prefer to participate remotely. In line with public health guidance, all safety precautions are required for those attending in person. Masks must be worn regardless of vaccine status for the duration of the meeting. Per COVID-19 safety guidelines, an in-person capacity limit of 60 people will be implemented. To enable public comment and translation services both in person and remotely, all public comment will be taken during Item 6A, the public comment period, directly after the superintendent's report. This time is for general public comments and/or comments on any specific agenda item. I call that out specifically because in ordinary proceedings, we have a moment for public comment at each agenda item. We are unable to do that at this time. So if you have a public comment to make, you will make it during the first public comment period. I will also make an announcement when we are ready to open for public comment. For those who are here in person, please stand behind the podium to make your public comment, state your name for the record, then share your comment and/or identify the agenda item you are addressing, then comment. You will have three minutes to address the board. For those who are with us virtually and would like to make a public comment, please call 1-669-900-6833. That's 669-900-6833. And enter or select meeting ID number 886-8631-9774. You will be placed in a virtual waiting room until the moderator of the meeting provides access to the live meeting. Thank you all for your patience as we strive to hear all voices, both in person and remote, and we will work diligently to be as effective and efficient as possible. Trustee Kazakos, will you call roll?
Alan Brooks.
Present.
Crane Smith.
Present.
Jesse Espinoza.
Present.
Bertie Olivares Kidwell.
I'm here.
Jessica Kazakos, I'm here.
Thank you. Will the community outreach specialists please introduce themselves?
Thank you, President Ms. Olivares Kidwell, and buenas noches a todos. Si usted nos está viendo, necesita interpretación al español durante la sesión, por favor seleccione el idioma en la parte inferior de su pantalla y haga clic en el globo donde dice Spanish o español. O si tiene alguna pregunta o comentario, también puede ir a la función del chat en su pantalla. President Kidwell, can we read the script that you just read in English?
Yes.
La junta de educación del distrito escolar de la ciudad de Merced reanuda las reuniones en persona a partir de esta noche y continúa haciendo o dando una opción virtual para aquellos que prefieren participar en forma remota. De acuerdo con las pautas de salud pública, se requieren todas las precauciones de seguridad para los asistentes en persona. Se deben usar máscaras independientemente del estado de la vacunación durante la reunión. De acuerdo con las pautas de seguridad del COVID-19, se implementará un límite de capacidad en personas, a 60 personas, para habilitar los servicios de traducción y comentarios públicos tanto en persona como en forma remota. Todos los comentarios públicos se tomarán durante el artículo 6A, que es el periodo de comentarios públicos directamente después del informe del superintendente. Este tiempo es para comentarios del público en general y comentarios sobre cualquier tema específico de la agenda. También haré un anuncio cuando estemos todos listos para abrir comentarios públicos. Para aquellos que están aquí en persona, parece detrás del podio y haga el comentario público. Indique su nombre para el registro, luego comparta su comentario, identifique el tema del cual desea abordar, luego comente. Tendrá tres minutos para dirigirse a la mesa directiva. Para maximar la participación de la comunidad, podemos ejercer el derecho de reducir el tiempo del uso de la palabra por persona si lo necesita una gran cantidad de oradores. Para aquellos que están con nosotros virtualmente y quisieran hacer un comentario público, por favor llame al teléfono 1669-900-6833 e ingrese o seleccione el número de identificación de la reunión, 856-8631-9774. Se le colocará en una sala de espera virtual hasta que el moderador de la reunión le brinde acceso a la reunión en vivo. Gracias por su paciencia mientras nos esforzamos por escuchar todas las voces tanto en persona como a distancia y trabajamos diligentemente para ser lo más efectivos y eficientes posible. Gracias.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. All the great kids were counting. Thank you very much. This is a Chinese word. Many people are counting. Merced was very busy. I saw you talking. 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 Many people are counting. I saw you 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 counting. The Merced City School District Board of Education is counting. They are 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 counting. Public health guidance. Safety. They are giving. They are giving. They are giving. They are giving. They are counting. 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 COVID-19 safety guidelines. They are counting. 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 Superintendent's report. They are counting. 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 Back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, and thank you to our community outreach specialists for the services they are providing and their patience with us as we figure this all out. Trustee Kazakos, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, if everybody would please stand. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Kazakos. In closed session, on a motion made by Bertie Olivares Kidwell and a second by Trustee Alan Brooks, the Board of Education voted to accept the resignation and release of contract for a school nurse as recommended by the administrative staff effective November 30, 2021. The roll call vote was unanimous. At this time, I would like to remember Taj Ku Muah Leah, also known as Jean Muah, a community leader and a pioneer of education, who passed from this life in August this year. He was born in the Kingdom of Laos and was the first to bring formal education to the Hmong people and other ethnic minorities in the mountains of Laos. He took education that was disrupted by war and reestablished it, making it accessible to all and even established the first training program for Hmong teachers. After the fall of Laos, he was granted political asylum in France, and after 15 years working there, he moved his family to the United States and settled in Merced, where he joined Merced City School District and served our students and our families for 15 years as a community outreach specialist and a Southeast Asian Community and Curriculum Support Coordinator. He served in many roles throughout his life, as an educator, a principal, and as a superintendent. But in all roles, his passion for education led him to push for reform and to constantly improve the education system. According to his favorite Hmong proverb, "Everything is accomplished by hard work and not by wizardry." He exemplified this and serves as a role model still. We can honor his legacy by putting in the hard work to make equitable education available to all and to constantly improve the educational system. We join Senator Ana Caballero and Assembly Member Adam Gray in remembering this educational pioneer, and we offer our sincere condolences to his family. Tonight, when we adjourn, we will adjourn in honor of Taj Ku Muah Leah, also known as Jean Muah. At this time, board members may report on activities such as school visits, meetings, and conferences. Trustee Smith.
Thank you very much. Number one, everybody in the audience, welcome back. It's great to see you. Better? My voice can only handle so much today. I was very pleased to receive an invitation by MCOE to attend the fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club over this past weekend, and thank you to Sheila and Alan Brooks for facilitating that. There was also an MCSD table, and I enjoyed spending some time with the crew who was there. And to my wife, Chagrin, made a very sizable donation that evening, so it all worked out. Alan, thank you very much. One interesting school visits report, so we had an occasion to need to get a COVID test. It was very quick, it was very easy. I'm very glad that the district has that service available to us. And I don't remember the young woman's name, but the aide who helped my daughter take the test could tell that my daughter was nervous. And so she said to my daughter exactly what I said moments before, which is, "Don't worry, honey. It's just like picking your nose." So, kudos to the district for providing this rapid COVID testing, and she was back in school within 24 hours. So, thank you very much, everybody. That's my report today.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Espinoza.
Thank you. I continued my principal meetings in discussing my personal view on just, you know, just challenges that a district faced and really getting their input on the perspective, having, you know, being like a direct contact on school sites. I met with Principal Crane at Ada Gibbons, and I ended up meeting with her twice actually, back to back, because our first meeting, it kind of, we didn't get to cover everything one, and so we came back and met up again, and so appreciate her willingness to do that. As well as I met with Principal Alexander from Rivera Middle and Principal Herr from Joe Stephanie. I was also able to volunteer. This was actually really fun. I was able to volunteer for Rivera Middle's first debate tournament, speech and debate tournament, and they went to Enoch's High School in Modesto, and which is really cool. I thought our middle schoolers were going to be competing against other middle schoolers. In fact, they joined a high school league, and they were, our seventh graders were debating against high schoolers, and they won rounds, which is amazing. Their first tournament, some seventh graders, you know, dedicate their lunch period to go learn a new skill, and shout out to Mr. Jones at Rivera Middle for hosting that. But yeah, they won rounds. It was really impressive, and those, and you know, I really, I feel like we forget how smart kids are. Like, I was going in and expecting, you know, to kind of be like, you know, in a way, you know, kind of bringing myself down, down, down. No, these kids were like, you know, blowing my socks off with the stuff that they knew and the stuff they were talking about and how fast they were grasping these concepts and these arguments. We were talking about the regulation of cryptocurrency and whether or not we should do that, and they were pulling out arguments I never even thought of, and so, you know, shout out to that whole team. And then really the process to get that started at other school sites is something I'm really excited for and the value that it brings to students. And another anecdote from that is just all the two middle school principals that went with us to the tournament, like, they were really impressed with the level of every speech and debate student and their confidence and their ability to articulate their ideas. And it was just, it was, it was, it was a warm sight to be able to see then our students in that environment and doing well in it. I also was able to in the Merced County School Board Association, the conference with Mr. Collins and Trustee Kazakos over the weekend, and that was very enlightening, and I look forward to going to the next one in a month or two for the, for the state. And with that, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Trustee Espinoza. Trustee Brooks.
Thank you. The past Tuesday, I attended the National Night Out, where we were able to meet police, firefighters, just all the groups that are in Merced, resources and things like that. I also attended Um, I, I also attended last Thursday, the Mercado event, which MCSD had a table, stopped by, um, seeing our, uh, superintendent, interim superintendent, Collins there, along with some other people, um, once again, it's a, a great event downtown, showing people the resources and the things that we have in Merced, and then, uh, past Saturday, I was able to attend the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, um, I set up the MCOE table, and in turn, we was able to, um, put together some donations that were significant for the Boys and Girls Club, so I appreciate that, so, um, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Brooks. Trustee Kazakos?
Thank you, um, I was able to attend the Latino Elected Officials of Merced County event put on by, uh, Fernando Aguilera, who's the president of the Merced Soccer Academy, um, so I, I really appreciate the efforts that he does, he always, uh, does his very best to unite all the elected officials and puts on great events, um, I, again, was at the Merced County School Board Association Fall Conference, um, that's always a fun conference, and you take away, you know, lots of nuggets and pieces of information and new ideas, um, but this year, it seemed like it was, it was exceptional, it was more than, and so I was really, um, glad that it turned out to be so, so good, and so I, I too look forward to, um, participating in the, um, state conference, uh, in December, virtually, um, and so that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kazakos. On October first, I attended a Celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month at Chenoweth Elementary with Principal Vance Discoto and Learning Director Nancy.
Barber.
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 Thank you. Uh, we got to see vocal otico dancers from UC Merced, and it was wonderful, he actually had me speak without warning, which I'm still upset about, but that's okay. It was a wonderful celebration. On October second was National Custodian Day, and I just want to shout out to all of our custodial staff across our district, and thank them for the amazing work that they've done, not just during the pandemic, but every single day. Also, on October first, the Central Valley Latino Mayors and Elected Officials Coalition provided some backpacks to Rivera Elementary, and we were able to hand those out to some very deserving students with Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Russell. Also at Gracie Elementary with Mr. Munoz and Ms. Cantrell, we were able to hand out additional backpacks there. On October fourth, I was, um, just absolutely honored to attend with MCOE the Excellence in Education Awards, where in anticipation of the virtual event, we went to the school sites, and, uh, our very own Steve Whitaker and Marcel Ibarra and Pam Atkinson were all recognized. Um, throughout last week, I was able to drop off library cards for our third graders throughout the district on, uh, on behalf of the Friends of the Merced County Library, and that was really exciting to know that we're getting those kids and their families into our Merced County Library, and getting them online access to so many services. Uh, on October seventh, I also attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Mercado event downtown Merced. And that concludes my report. Now we will move to our superintendent's report, interim Superintendent Collins.
Thank you, and good evening, President Oliveris Kidwell and trustees, uh, I too am just thrilled with the, uh, Excellence in Education Awards with Pam, Steve, and Marcel. Um, we look forward to actually bringing that as a board agenda item, just as another way of saying thank you and congratulations, and a, at a coming regular meeting. During these past couple of weeks, I had the pleasure of attending several school staff meetings and classroom visits with school principals, and I gotta tell you, I am so proud of what our administration, faculty, and staff are providing to our students every day at school. In addition, I had the wonderful opportunity to read books to Mrs. Borges's third grade class at Fremont and Ms. Stapp's kindergarten class at Peterson. These are challenging times, but our students are engaged and they're learning, and our MCSD family continues to rise to the challenges that we face together. Last Thursday, I attended, also attended the last Mercado of the Year organized by Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, was able to interact with children and adults alike, and supported our community liaisons as they shared about resources for children and families that Merced City School District has to offer. This past weekend, I attended the Merced County School Boards Association Fall Conference with trustee Kazakos and trustee Espinoza, we all shared in multiple, uh, continuing education presentations and networking opportunities with other school board, uh, members and superintendents in Merced County. Um, I look forward to actually sharing, uh, the information and presentations with the full Board of Education for your review, uh, in the coming week. Uh, this week is Digital Citizenship Week, and in light of what's been happening around the TikTok challenges and other issues due to social media usage, it is a great time to create a deeper awareness around this topic. Our schools will be incorporating digital citizenship lessons and their lesson planning to help emphasize the importance of using technology wisely and responsibly. Part of our goal at Merced City School District is to build our students into positive and productive citizens for our future community, and we continue to ask our community for partnership in teaching our children about making the right choices as it relates to social media and being responsible digital citizens. The challenge around, uh, filling our open positions and hiring qualified staff continues to impact our schools, we're doing everything we can to address this, aside from outreach through various events around the community, we're also holding a district hiring fair, uh, event on Thursday, October twenty first, right here at the STEAM Center. The goal is to help spread the word and make the application process easier and faster for potential applicants, uh, that want to join the MCSD family. Our staff will be on hand there to help fill out applications, even conduct on the spot interviews potentially, and answer questions about joining our team. Uh, yesterday, uh, morning, we had our first leadership breakfast with MCTA, we had a great discussion on items of concern and identifying ways that we can continue to collaborate for student success. This opportunity is an important effort to listen intentionally to each other, work together for the common good of our students, our staff, and our community. We're really excited to meet for, uh, lunch with CSEA leadership for the same purpose in the coming weeks. This informal meeting elevates the relationship between MCSD and our labor partners and creates honest and open dialogue. Lastly, October is National Principals Month. I would like to share my gratitude for our exceptional group of principals, assistant principals, and learning directors leading our school sites. As a former principal, I know that the past eighteen months have been unlike any other in our educational careers, yet they have embraced the challenges and opportunities of the school year. Every day, they lead our staff and support, uh, staff to fulfill our commitments to our students by providing high-quality education, building welcoming school cultures, and developing the engaging family and community partnerships our students need to be successful. I'm grateful for the difference that they are making, and continue to make for our students and staff at MCSD. Thank you for the time to share with you, Madam President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Collins. I am so thrilled to be able to say this to real people, so thank all of you, thanks to all of you for joining us here tonight in person. The public is invited to comment on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, in accordance with Board Policy nine three two three. Topics not on the agenda which are brought to the board's attention may be investigated by the superintendent and a report made to the board, either publicly or privately at a future meeting. State law prohibits the board from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment period. Comments from members of the public shall not exceed three minutes on an item, or a total of twenty minutes per item, unless timelines are waived by a majority of the board. So I will ask that any in-person speakers take their place behind the podium. And before you begin to speak, please state your name for the record, and then address the board.
And. Hi, I'm Cristiana Jones, I have a general concern that I'd like the board to consider. I'm an unvaccinated employee with no symptoms or recent exposure to anyone with COVID. I'm wondering why am I and others like me being required to undergo weekly COVID testing? We know vaccinated people can still get and spread the virus. As someone who has had COVID, the antibodies I have would likely protect me from another infection. The district tells me we don't know how long COVID antibodies last, but you don't know how long vaccine antibodies last either, and this burden is not being required of vaccinated employees. The weekly testing policy is hurting employee morale, employee relationships, and our students and staff members. Essential, essential staff members are leaving work to test, being replaced by subs who don't know the students and instruction like regular staff. How can we justify forcing staff away from teaching and support to be covered by others who could better serve the district in other ways? This is a waste of instruction time, staff, resources, and funds. I don't want my own children's teachers to leave the class for this, and I don't want their teachers stressing about this testing on their own time. How long will these weekly tests be required? Will teachers have to test the rest of our teaching careers? Or are we going to be fired for not getting the jab? This requirement for unvaccinated is discrimination and coercion. This is pressuring people to get this new and unproven vaccine that some people have had significant side effects from. I know employees who legitimately wanted to get vaccinated for their health, that's great, but I'm finding more and more employees who didn't trust the vaccine, and tell me they only got it because they felt like they had to, or they didn't want their freedoms to be, um, to be taken away. And some told me that they, they just got it so they didn't have to do weekly testing at work. That, to me, is absurd. Some believe that the vaccine should be mandated for school employees, because when staff gets COVID, we can spread the virus and miss, miss work. But vaccinated employees are still missing work after getting and spreading COVID, and I know an employee who missed more days of work from vaccine side effects than I missed from having COVID. When I give birth, I miss time from work. What's next? Will the district tell me what birth control I should use so I don't miss work? Quarantine and masking requirements should be the same for vaccinated and unvaccinated, as we can all still get and spread the virus. Weekly testing should be done away with.
Time.
But since I think you will not stand up for this, consider testing a random sample of employees. Also, delayed test, uh, you delay weekly testing for those who have had COVID, af- after.
Thank you for your comments, you have used your time.
For those who have proof of antibodies, thank you.
Next speaker, please. Please state your name for the record and address the board, if you please. If you'd like to pull the microphone down, you're more than welcome to.
Um, I'm DeeDee West.
Can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
If you pull this part of the microphone, you can pull it down a little further. Yes. Thank you.
I'm just gonna be short. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I can't hear the speaker, I don't know if that's something on my end, I did hear her start.
I'm not speaking.
She's not speaking yet, trustee Kazakos.
Your face either, I'm, I apologize.
That's okay, I'm just gathering myself. I'm thinking, sorry. I work for Merced City Schools for coming up on thirty-five years this week. I'm sorry, I did not know it was gonna be this emotional.
There's tissue on the desk in the entryway, trustee Smith? Thank you.
Thank you. I should have known it was gonna cry, cry about everything. Okay. Many of you know my story, and know that I attribute all that I've ever endured to character building. I use the word all the time. Sincerely, though, I'm grateful for all that I have encountered, as I truly believe that I've been prepared, um, it's prepared me to have a servant heart, to do the job that I do. One of you in this room once even told me, I don't know what God is preparing you for, DeeDee, but it must be big. Even Jesus flipped tables in the temple. Well, I was not in a place at that time to understand what that meant, but standing here, now, I must agree, this is big. I love my God, and I love my family. And if, yes, if anybody in here knows me, you know that includes each of you. All of a big hug. Thank you for giving me the time, I appreciate it. I love my country, and I love my job. We've always been very proud to be part of this district, no matter what, we've always been about what is best for kids, all kids. But this, what we're doing to one another is not what is best for our kids.
Thirty seconds.
We're willingly handing over our rights and freedoms to the government to make critical decisions for ourselves and our children, decisions no government of a free people should ever have a right to make. A mandate is not a law, but otherwise, a declaration by one who dictates what others must do, because they know they have no real authority to do so. I know in my heart, we can make better decisions for our community, for my family, than any government. Consider this.
Time.
Really? Okay.
If I would, I'd like to make a statement that I'm sorry, I cannot get my timer to stop, um, that please feel free, if you are not able to complete your comments, please write them in email, and you can send them to each of the trustees. That is always, that is always available, it is always available to you, but we are subject to, uh, we are subject to law here. But we will one hundred percent, we, one hundred percent read every comment and consider every comment that is sent to us. Next speaker, please state your name.
Summer Kaki.
And address the board, if you will.
Thank you for the time, um, I come to you as a very concerned parent, and I will try and keep it as brief as possible. Um. Is that better?
You must have your mask on in order to speak.
Okay, can I pull the?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you not start my time till I start talking?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will restart your time.
Is it on? I don't know if it's even on. Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Excellent. Um, I come to you this evening as a concerned parent, and I will try and keep this as brief as possible. This evening, when we started this meeting, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, did we not? That flag, it stands for freedom. The student body that you serve are made up of children, and let's be quite frank, who don't have an option whether or not they are vaccinated, because their parents are making that decision for them. Children who come from underserved families, children who may be in abusive situations, where school is their only break away from that. We should not be discriminating against the vaccinated or unvaccinated, it shouldn't matter. You are the voice for all of these kids. I know that the state comes down, and the state says this, and the state says that, but at the end of the day, you all are their advocates, and I would like to sincerely thank you for the work that you do with them. You make a difference, be their voice, be their voice where somebody else can't be, because some kids need that in-person learning, and that should not be robbed of them based on their vaccination status. And that is pretty much the gist of what I had to say. You need to ask yourself a question, where do you stand, and what will you do for the student body that you serve? Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Ms. Win, oh, just a moment. Please state your name for the record and address the board, if you'd like.
I'm Tammy Trost. Consider this, if the information, medical evidence, as it were, available to the public stated that the shot you believed would protect you and your loved ones, had effects that would potentially cause harm to your students, and because of that, the district, state government made a mandate that you could not get it or risk losing pay, benefits, your job, and be threatened with disciplinary action if you do not, if you do not comply. What then might your position be? This is my feeling. This is my very strong feeling and many others, many others. I can't believe there aren't more people here. This is really sad. These muzzles are absolutely ridiculous. I didn't hear half of what
Excuse me, speaker. You are required to wear a mask when you are in this room or you will be asked to leave if you cannot comply with the mandate or the protections. Thank you.
Basic freedoms should not require a medical procedure. Do you understand that? Does everybody understand that? Our basic freedoms are being stripped from us little by little and we should be fed up. We are under a tyrannical government. They serve us. We don't obey them. They serve us. They are being paid by our tax money and I am angry that this nonsense just keeps dragging on and on and on. I am furious. I'm furious. This is ridiculous and I think we all know it. Deep down in our hearts, we know this is ridiculous. We should not be forced to do a medical procedure to keep our basic freedoms.
Are there any other speakers in house? Ms. Winiger, do we have any callers?
I have one caller, Madam President.
Thank you. Would you please bring them in?
Will do. Caller with the phone number ending in 782, please press star six to unmute your line, then state your name and address the board if you'd like. Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Malaio. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. If you would please state your name for the record and address the board if you'd like.
All right, this is Danielle Malaio. And then just let me know when I can start speaking.
You can speak now. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Malaio. I am a wife, a mother of four, and a healthcare worker. I'm here to voice my concerns about mandating the COVID-19 vaccine to our children. First and foremost, I am not an anti-vaxxer, but I do believe everyone has the right to make their own medical decisions. Just like we do not force a patient who is against blood transfusions to get a transfusion, even though it is what's needed to save their life, we should not force people to do things against their will. Forcing children to wear masks in school and depriving them of fresh air and fear mongering them into fearing their classmates is one thing, but now this tyrant of a governor is going to mandate this vaccine for our children and this is beyond reproach. I will read some items that I believe are very important for the public to hear. This is from America's Frontline Doctors. Quote, "Vaccine safety requires proper animal trials and peer review data. This is especially concerning considering the fatal failure of prior coronavirus vaccine attempts such as SARS-CoV-1. The virus said is 78% identical to SARS-CoV-2. Prior coronavirus and other respiratory vaccines have failed due to the cis, cis, sorry, scientific phenomenon known as pathogenic priming that makes the vaccine recipient more likely to suffer a sudden fatal outcome due to massive cytokine storm when exposed to the wild virus. In addition to pathogenic priming, there are three other potential safety issues that are being minimized. While we are hopeful that the vaccine is both effective and safe, hope is not science because these experimental vaccines have not been tested in accordance with the usual standards, we have serious concerns about safety." End quote. Another note, the FDA supposedly approved the Pfizer vaccine, but there's a catch. The FDA approved a vaccine known as Comirnaty, not the EUA Pfizer vaccine that is currently being given. A huge concern for me as a parent is the heart issues that the vaccine can cause. Here's what the FDA is saying about the pericarditis and myocarditis after vaccination. Quote, "The FDA conducted a rigorous evaluation of the post-authorization safety surveillance data pertaining to myocarditis and pericarditis following administration of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine and has determined that the data demonstrate increased risk particularly within the seven days following the second dose. The observed risk is higher among males under 40 years of age compared to female and younger males. The observed risk is highest in males 12 through 17 years of age. Available data from short-term follow-up suggests that most individuals have had resolution of symptoms. However, some individuals required intensive care support."
30 seconds.
Information, I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Information, information is not yet available about long-term health outcomes." End quote. Um, there's some more information here, but I would like to say that time and money will be well spent to promoting treatments that do work. I encourage everyone to visit America's Frontline Doctors, AmericasFrontlineDoctors.org and just to please fight this vaccine mandate on our children. It's, we can't work anymore. We can't go to, you know, now it's not gonna be in-person school. We can't bank little by little. Thank you.
Ms. Winig, Ms. Winiger, do we have any other callers?
I have two more callers, Madam President.
Thank you.
Caller with a phone number ending in 183, please press star six to unmute your line. State your name for the record and address the board if you'd like.
My name is Miranda Griswold. Um, thank you for allowing us to call in. I just wanted to let you guys know that there is a group of parents here that completely support the vaccine mandates and we think that it is an excellent idea for teachers and students to be vaccinated. Um, we just aren't there in person being loud about it, but we completely support you guys. We want to keep our schools open and we want to keep our community safe and we know that the best way to do that is to be vaccinated and to increase herd immunity. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Next caller, please. Ms. Winiger, do we have another caller?
Yes, Madam President. Caller with the phone number ending in 311, please press star six to unmute your line. State your name for the record and address the board if you'd like. Caller with the phone number ending in 311, please press star six. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, caller, we can hear you. If you would please state your name for the record and feel free to address the board if you wish.
Okay.
Please mute.
Hi, my name is Tracy Del Real and I just wanted to call in tonight to, um, thank you all for your time. And say that, um, I am definitely in favor of the vaccine mandate. I just wanted to, um, thank you for everything that you guys do. I know that you're not there standing in as health experts, that you are our educators, that you support our children, that you do everything that you can to make sure that this school year can be as normal as possible in the times that we're in. Um, so I really appreciate that. I just want to tell you, we support you. We support whatever happens. I want to remind the public that there are choices. There are choices, whether they like those choices, whether they want to do waivers, whether they want to try homeschool. They do have choices for their family. This isn't a one-size-fits-all and I get it, but I also want to just let the board know that we support you and have a good evening.
Ms. Winiger, next caller, please.
Caller with the phone number ending in, please press star six to unmute your line. State your name for the record, then address the board if you'd like. If you're on YouTube, please mute your YouTube feed. Caller with the phone number ending in 369.
Hello?
Yes, caller, we can hear you. If you would please mute your YouTube feed, state your name for the record and feel free to address the board if you wish.
Okay. Uh, my name is Matt Hatcher and, um, I'm a, my kids are out of school. Uh, my comment is directed more to the people that are listening than to the school board. Um, it's my opinion that, uh, if you're a parent that doesn't agree with the mandate, you probably have a lot more, uh, problems than just the mandate, uh, about what's going on in our schools, what's being taught in our schools. And I would encourage the parents to, um, be courageous and pull their kids out of public school, of government school. Homeschool your kids, put them in private school, um, where you're not subject to the state's dictates because I don't believe our school board is gonna be courageous enough to take a stand, so it's up to the parents to do it. Uh, and there's other people out there, band together and, and, uh, su- support one another. Um, it's the biggest thing you can do for your children, to protect them from the school system and from the government. Uh, and really, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Winiger, do we have any other callers?
I have no more callers at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Winiger, for your help. At this time, we move to item 7A, the Hands-on Hero Award. Mr. Collins.
I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, could you get your microphone on, please? Thank you.
Let's try again. Come right up here. Thank you, Madam President and trustees. Uh, our very own Susan Ledesma, Department Secretary for our preschool program, was recognized as one of first five Merced County's Hands-on Heroes, awardees. Susan was nominated by trustee Shane Smith for her dedication to advocating for children and their families in Merced. Susan grew up with many examples of community service. As a child, her parents were extremely involved in the community. Aside from her work at MCSD, Susan is also involved in many initiatives outside her job, including with the California School Employees Association, Chapter 530, Atwater Little League, the LGBTQ Alliance, and Miss California's Princess Program. We are very proud of Susan and grateful for her continued dedicated service to our students and staff and at MCSD and our community. I wanted to give a chance for, uh, Susan to say anything she'd like to, to the board, and then also the board to also share anything they want to with Susan. And we have actually a short little video that we want to show when we conclude with that. So we'll start with any trustees. If you have anything you'd like to share right now, then I'll turn it over to Susan and we'll watch the short video.
Uh, trustee Kazakos.
Ms. Ledesma, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for all the work that you do, as was already stated, not just in our MCSD community, but in our larger Merced County community and beyond. The work that you do doesn't go unnoticed and we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Trustee Espinoza.
I just want to echo that. Uh, thank you for the work you do and for the leadership you provide to Merced City and showing just do your best and what it's all about is helping students. So thank you for what you do.
Trustee Brooks.
Uh, once again, congratulations and thank you for your passion and being a effective part of the community. We really appreciate that.
Trustee Smith.
I feel like I get to congratulate her twice. So Susan, I, I have to apologize almost profusely. Now, this is like the 12th time you've gotten this award. Every time it is so well deserved. Um, you know, I think you could have been nominated on so many different grounds, including your work for our classified staff, LGBT community, and frankly, baseball. Um, but I'm just so glad that, to have gotten to know you and learn more about what you've done for our preschool. And I think, you know, the linchpin that we'll talk about in the video obviously is your work connecting our Hispanic communities and our non-English speaking communities to our preschool. You are, you are, you are literally the human conduit that makes our preschool so successful. Um, you're the glue that holds the whole shop together and I'm just very grateful to have met you and know you and I'm glad that I got a chance to recognize you. So my congratulations to you and your family.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but if you have anything you'd like to share. Oh, I did it again. President Oliveris Kidwell.
Trying not to take it personally.
You're so polite, asking everybody first and then I forget, but sorry.
Trying not to take it personally. Ms. Ledesma, I have known you for close to 20 years. Our paths have crossed again and again and again. Every event I attend, you're volunteering. Every effort that this city has or this district has, you're involved. I will echo the sentiments of all the trustees so far and, uh, MCOE in recognizing you. Well-earned, well-deserved. Thank you for the work that you do in all the organizations. Thank you also for representing La Raza in the way that you do. I am proud and excited and thankful to have you as part of this district and as part of this community. Thank you and congratulations.
I blew the, I blew the last introduction, so.
Not to put me on the spot or anything, right? Um, I just want to say thank you again. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for the nomination. Um, did not expect all of this here today, um, but I appreciate the acknowledgement. Um, you know, it, um, Mr. Collins mentioned my parents were a great, great example for me and, um, if it wasn't for what I saw growing up, I wouldn't do any of what I do now. And, um, so I am very thankful to them and, you know, it is other women in our community such as yourself, um, Ms. Oliveris Kidwell, Bernie, sorry. Carmen Ramirez is also another great example, a good friend of mine in the community. And, um, I just want to say thank you to my department for allowing me to do what I need to do with the union and to my family and my kids, one of them is over there on her iPad, um, for allowing me to shine for a minute because she's usually the one in the spotlight. Um, but my older two as well for being so supportive with me and helping me when I run all over the place and I'm got a car full of equipment for one thing or another and my car is filthy right now because we had National Coming Out Day yesterday and it's got a bunch of Free Mom Hugs stuff written all over it, um, and giant stuff as well. So, um, it's just constantly go, 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 go. But I appreciate the support from my family because without the support from my family and my department, I couldn't do anything. And so I appreciate that and I appreciate the support from our district as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we actually have a short video queued up, um, to share a little bit about the presentation or the description of what took place with the Hands-on Hero Award.
District, I really felt like recognition for Susan is long overdue and well-deserved. As I said, she's been our department secretary for four years. She's been a big part under two different directors of making MCSD's preschool program the award-winning program that it is. And she deserves that recognition for helping guide the ship, maintaining the operation, keeping everybody together and focused, helping parents interface with the, the program and just generally creating an environment where children can thrive. Susan absolutely goes above and beyond her job duties.
So just yesterday, I think it was, or the day before, um, I was helping a little girl get registered who, um, is in custody of grandma. And when I told grandma, I came out to tell grandma, okay, we've got everything ready. Um, I had complimented the little girl on her shoe. She had really cute Converse on it. And so I said, I'm gonna go to lunch, but she's ready. She should be able to start tomorrow. And the little girl looked at me and just hugged my legs so tight. She was so excited to start school. It just like, it almost made me cry because I was like, oh, I just totally made that little girl's life. Like, she's so happy to start school. Um, I used to work in middle school for years and so I went from helping prepare kids for graduation and go to high school to where they're leaving our district, to where they're just starting our district and starting their journey. So I went from one end of the spectrum to the other, so it was quite an adjustment. Um, but the little ones, like, they just take your hand and they just want, like, that support and they just want somebody to look at them and, and be their friend. When my
Thank you very much. We were, there's a little bit more, obviously, but we want to actually thank and give one more round of applause to Susan Ledesma for the Hands-on Hero, for the eighth time you've received the award. Thank you very much.
It's early, we'd be shaking your hands, but we'll give you virtual high five.
Item eight, the consent calendar. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, trustee Kazakos.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? During that, I will call for a vote. Trustee Kazakos.
Aye.
Trustee Espinoza.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Aye to him and aye. Motion carries. Item nine, A. Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Madam President. As stated.
I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. Thank you.
You got it. Good evening, trustees. Again, as stated on the agenda, the Merced City School District priorities are developed and approved by the Board of Education each year in June. Given the recent history for MCSD, this process did not occur as a result of the pandemic and other HR-related issues. The current MCSD priorities were adopted by the Board of Education on June 25, 2019, and have not subsequently been reviewed or adjusted. Since that time, we've had three new board members, a new interim superintendent, and have developed with a highly collaborative community stakeholder process, new LCAP goals for 2122. It is for all these reasons that this agenda item for discussion is important. I'd like the board to discuss and consider direction for staff as we review our current status of vision, mission, and district priorities as they relate and align to the adopted LCAP goals. Since this was not done at the start of 2021 and 2022 school years, it is important for the board to review and provide that direction. We can then plan to follow any direction from the Board of Education as we work towards the June adoption date in 2022. Tonight, I'm looking forward to listening to discussion among the board, as well as any consensus direction from the board for staff as it relates to the development of the process to review and/or the development of and approval of the vision, mission, and district priorities while ensuring alignment with the LCAP goals. Also, it would be my preference that as we move towards moving through this process towards approval, that in the future, these are reviewed every two years as opposed to annually because of the consistency and the ability to continue to carry out the work over a longer period of time versus goals shifting or priorities shifting too quickly for an organization to be able to react. So with that, I just want to turn it over to the Board of Education for your discussion and potential direction.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So to facilitate the discussion, instead of calling on each of you individually, I would like to have more of a conversational approach to this. However, we still need to understand when someone has the floor. So how we can just proceed as we would in a polite conversation, if that's okay? Is that okay with all of the trustees?
Yes.
Okay. So I think some questions that I would ask as we move forward through this is, it has been some time since these goals have been, as Mr. Collins stated, it's been some time since these goals have been visited. I think we all agree that there have been some dramatic circumstances that we faced. And is it time for us to change, maybe not a complete change of direction, but maybe some nuanced changes? And so I would then open the floor to anyone who would like to speak. Well, don't all jump in at once. Trustee Espinoza, you look like you're ready to speak.
I do have some thoughts, and then I hope they can serve as kind of a basis for discussion. So first, I just want to say thank you to the district team, school staff, and then specifically the Board of Education for all the work you guys do all year long, trying to make sure that, you know, we do what's best for our students. I think the vision and mission meeting is really important and the start of a really important discussion. And I'm hesitant to speak, but I think I can to speak for the rest of the board and the community when I say that, you know, possibly the best thing that could come from this vision and mission meeting would be the results that we want to see for our students. And I truly believe that, so I want to start off with a quote. It's quotes by Eric Crouch. He's a fifth grade teacher in Columbus, Georgia. He says, "He truly believes that all of the problems that we have in our world are trapped in our students' passions." And that if we can pursue those passions, we can solve the problems. And so really, I've been pondering over three critical questions. And I discussed with them with our principals and our school sites and parents as I was canvassing and Mr. Collins. And I'd like the board to be able to introduce these questions and really you guys mull them over. So my first question is, why have our previous efforts not produced the outcomes that we desire? And I think this is a really critical question that we really have to get a specific answer for. Because unless we know why our previous outputs haven't created the outcomes that we desire, then anything else we do is just a guess. So I think that's really crucial. The second question is, okay, where do we want to go? What are the results and outcomes that we're looking to see from our students and from our school sites? And then third, once we know where we want to go, where do we want to start? What body of result-based research are we going to use for the base of our collective strategy? And so I'll give a brief response to these questions in my view. So to the first question of why how previous efforts have not produced the outcomes we desired, I think there's two possible solutions. Either A, somewhere there's a disconnect between our outputs and our desired outcomes. And it would be our mission to identify that disconnect. And/or B, the measure of success that we're using to judge our success of our students' outcomes is in some way flawed. My personal view, I think it's a little bit of both. I think definitely the measure of success that we use is too limited and too narrow to assess the whole child's needs and abilities. But because this data informs our strategy, our strategy becomes insufficient to support every student to their fullest potential. So this leads to the second question. Where do we want to go? What are the results and outcomes that we want to see? MCSD has three goals in our vision and mission statement. They're to ensure that every student excels academically, every student builds character, and every student is a productive member of our community. I would say the World Economic Forum and a plethora of neuroscience research agrees that these are the right three areas to be focusing on for students of the 21st century. Yet, we need proxies in order to be able to judge whether or not we're reaching those goals. What does it mean to excell academically? What does it mean to build character? And what does it mean to be a productive member of our community? And how are we measuring that to see if we are achieving it? I'd also first like to recommend that excelling academically could, I would like an altercation of that word just because I think excelling academically is actually a measure, a metric of what we're trying to go. The vision is the thing that we see at the end product. And the end product is students being lifelong learners. Because if they do well in school, but they hate learning, I think the purpose of education was missed a little bit. Our goal is to create lifelong learners. And then second, when it says it's a productive member of our community, I think we should look more globally. The Department of Education says we need globally competent students, which means when it's like our community, it feels very limited. It's like Merced. That's what I think. When it's really, it's the 21st global community. And really making the acknowledgement in our vision and mission that the world that our students are entering is a world that none of us have ever experienced or anyone in the history has ever experienced before. And then, so finally, the third question that I have is, so once we decide collectively where we want to go, I think we have to decide where we want to start and how we're going to get there. So what body of evidence are we going to agree to use for the base of our collective strategy? And in this view, I have, I recommend further aligning to the policy and research that this district already supports. So that would be the three that I have is that Every Student Succeeds Act. This is the federal policy that dictates and says how public education in the United States should work. Also, visible learning. This is John Hattie's meta meta-analysis that we use to justify all actions towards collective teacher advocacy. That's where it came from. And really, this meta-analysis is a meta-analysis of other meta-analyses consisting of 100,000 studies. It's a great place for evidence to start. But there are definitely, you know, things that, you know. So then the second thing, the third one is success for all. And this is a educational framework that I believe we align pretty closely with, but not completely. And it's gone through a plethora of randomized controlled studies. And it's one of the longest and most standing rigorously tested framework for education shown to be extremely effective in improving literacy for underserved youth. They have a phonics emphasis in the beginning grade levels and an emphasis on cooperative learning. I'll say just generally, if you're looking at Every Student Succeeds Act, they endorse a learning framework called the Universal Design for Learning, visible learning and success for all. A commonality between all of these really either research or federal policy puts a really emphasis on personalized learning as well as cooperative learning. And personalized learning is a necessity. I mean, we say, you know, there's no silver bullet in education, and that's probably true. The idea is like every student is different, and we need to create a classroom that works for every student. The only way to do that is to go student-first, build the classroom up from them based on what works for them. So we're saying clear goals and flexible options. And I think that's what the federal government says is best for our students and what research shows it brings results for our students. And so that's where I'd like to start the discussion, kind of where we want to go, what are the results we want to see? Why haven't we seen the results before? And what type of body of evidence are we going to use to kind of move forward going forward from there?
Wow.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Espinoza. Who wants to follow that?
I think the new guy should go.
Yeah, let's put the new guy on the spot.
Okay. Vision and mission. I think, first of all, we need to make sure that we have things that are measurable, have programs in place that we can measure so we can look at the, look at, you know, the data. You know, what's going on with the data, what happened two years ago? And have we moved the needle? And we know literacy is the main problem, and it's very important. We also need, based on what Jesse said, in our vision and mission statement, it says every, every is the equivalent to all. So we need to make sure that all students are learning on the same level and once again, close that learning gap. That's all I have for right now. We'll continue the discussion. But I like what Jesse was saying. It's going to require us to think outside the box a little. But isn't that what education is, is the pioneers of actually thinking outside the box and making the same results, but just in a different way? So a lot of what he said is true. It's going to, once again, take us to think outside the box, but that's what we're here for, so.
Thank you. Trustee Kazakos, do you have anything to add right now?
I do. The comments that I have are more on the on the other side of things as far as discussing a timeframe and what small goals that we will need to make from October till June when we do decide to establish or adopt or approve whatever our goals and priorities are going to be. So I'm interested in that, making sure that we have something in place so that we're, you know, so that we make sure that we're meeting all the important steps leading up to this. This is something big and huge and giant that almost none of the current board had even a hand in. And so I would imagine that there would be a lot, or maybe not necessarily a lot of changes, but for sure, I think there would be a lot of input. And so I want to make sure that we're allowing ourselves enough time to get to that. So those are all the comments that I have for now. Thank you.
Trustee Smith.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Espinoza. I'll say a few words with a smile on my face. You can't see it. But I agree, the core question for the board is what does winning look like? We can have different ideas about what that is, and that's kind of the discussion we have to have. I'll take an approach that maybe Ms. Kazakos was taking. I kind of view today as like the process discussion, not so much the substance, although it's hard not to take a peek at it, right? You know, I was very much in favor of waiting until the Area 3 trustee seat was filled before having this conversation. I'm glad that that is done. I think that this process would be benefited by some kind of a facilitator, a skilled facilitator. I think now is the right time to pull that trigger. We all have ideas and it can, the difference between a conversation that's just filled with fumes and words that can get down on a page that we all agree on, I think somebody, we've got to task somebody with thinking about that and helping us distill it. So I would suggest we do this through some kind of a facilitated process. The part that I heard from Mr. Collins earlier that got me the most excited was the concept of getting community input in this process. I think I would agree that this board deserves a chance to put its stamp on the guiding principles of the district. I think, to be fair, there was a global pandemic and a state-mandated school shutdown for almost 18 months that maybe got in the way of the last goals being fully implemented. But this is a new day, and we've got a new opportunity. If there is a process by which this board can share its ideas and come to a consensus with a facilitator, but also with a very robust manner in which we can take in and consider public viewpoints, I think that's the process we should consider. So I kind of see us picking a date, maybe two, three months from now and working backwards from that with perhaps some interim meetings where the board kind of free associates without a net. And we have an opportunity for public comment, maybe at a second meeting, and then a third, we sit down and put pen to paper.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, if we could speak a little bit about the process. I think the first question that we have to ask is, are we looking to dismantle and start from scratch? And I would propose that, no, that we have a really decent framework that's been in place. We have a very decent strategy that was developed by our previous board, and I thank them for the work they've done on that. And that instead of starting from scratch, that we look at this and how we can modify it as best we can. Because we know that this is at a very high level. And when we look at some of the approach, some of the thoughts and some of the theory behind it, we can still capture it by making minor changes. I think that the process, the looking at the end date, as trustee Kazakos suggested, and working backwards, as trustee Smith suggested, and looking at measurable goals and how we utilize the data, as trustee Brooks also mentioned. I think all of those are very important as part of this discussion. So my question is, do we need a facilitator at the first meeting? Or do we start with a free association conversation? And then bring in a facilitator for the second meeting? Or do we need them at the first meeting? And then my question for you is, how do we, is this, is it appropriate at this stage to have community input? Because I know that our LCAP goals are community-driven.
Correct.
So that, I believe that that's where we hear from the community, correct?
Absolutely. So the 2122 LCAP goals are fresh, done, full engagement. And that's what I tried to make sure I called out in the introduction. And one of the other focuses in the introduction that I was trying to call out was making sure that we have alignment, right? So that there's not kind of this extra energy going off to the east or the west when we should be, you know, flowing north and south, so to speak. As far as the, I mean, I don't want to say consensus, but as far as the information that so far has come in this conversation regarding process, that is, that's not difficult to do as far as choosing a target date and backwards mapping from there in terms of the work that the board would do. Finding a facilitator, we can do that, whether that be, it'll probably be external just because of this, for the purpose of time on staff and someone that actually, you know, does that work very regularly. Because I, and I think you kind of embedded a question there, President Oliveris Kidwell, about should that person, should that person kind of start in that first meeting or maybe after a kind of a natural discussion? I would suggest, this is my personal opinion, the board can have a different opinion, that actually that would be a yes. And part of that is, is because that way, from the beginning, that nuanced conversation actually makes that progress and there's the ball is moving. If we just start with the one, then it's a lot of conversation and notes, but it may not go anywhere. And so just for the sake of efficiency and time, I think that the facilitator should start at that first meeting. So taking, for example, a facilitator, taking that nuanced, the nuanced information, the very concrete information that trustee Espinoza just shared, and putting all of those things together into the next step. The other, kind of to address the other question that you mentioned in terms of the good work that the previous board has done. And is it like throwing it all out and starting new? No, I would agree, no, it's not that. But I do believe it does need this board's review in terms of nuance, where we stand today after the last 18 months and how we've, how this has all happened and where our students stand today. And, you know, the reality coming out of the, being back in person is we really need to do, have a conversation about a baseline. being back in person is we really need to do, have a conversation about a baseline. Because ultimately, uh, data is, uh, and how do we measure? Are all things that have to be part of that conversation? When you're looking at data from previous or before 18 months ago and trying to compare that to today, there's so many factors there that is very difficult to measure. So I think that I'll stop talking, but I think I kind of addressed a few of those things that have come up with conversations so far. So I would suggest that yes, we choose kind of a target area or time or date. We as staff can backwards map that and start suggesting dates with the Board of Education. And we as staff can also begin searching for a facilitator that the board can approve. So I think those things can, can get started out of tonight.
Thank you. So I feel that you have enough.
If, if.
I'm sorry, Madam President, if you can get your microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kazakos. Are we beholden to a timeframe? Do we have anything at this point?
Typically, these are adopted in June. So, and like I said previously, they were adopted annually as opposed to, and I would love to see that extended because for an organization our size, you know, changing the, the board priorities on an annual basis, if there were to be significant changes, just shifts all the resources and the attention and everything all the way around. And so I'd love to see a longer focus that comes out of this. Again, is there a, is there an ed code provision or anything like that in terms of that? No. So I think we're just looking at kind of that June, moving into the 2223 school year as the goal.
As part of that discussion with regards to the timeframe, I think aligning with elections and the changeover of the board makes the most sense. Because then any new board member will have an opportunity to review and be able to participate in the iteration process.
That point. I like the idea of more time and I, I would have no problem making the end date be this coming June. Right? There's an election right around the corner. Would we want to, I don't know if we need to decide this now, but I think you're right. This is a policy document at bottom. This organization needs to educate. So I'd be in favor of stability, but maybe if we adopt this June, perhaps we know going in that the next adoption would be the following June, 2023. And then that starts the two-year cycle.
Yeah. And ultimately, whatever happens in terms of the election in that cycle, Dr. Smith, you know, they may take a look at the work that this board has done. May make small changes, may make, you know, an adjustment or two. And, but yeah, that could start a two-year cycle. I'm, I'm open to that. I think the biggest thing for and this organization is consistency right now.
Yes.
Consistency in those priorities and a review of those priorities. So I, I feel like I have good direction if, if the board feels like generally there's consensus on those key points that I brought up.
I think you've heard from all of us in the discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President, might I request a three to five minute recess before we move on to the next item, please?
Thank you, Trustee Kazakos. Yes, we will call a five-minute recess. Five-minute break. Starting at eight thirty-five. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are back. We are for, ready for item nine B Kids Discovery Station Explorer Membership. Mr. Collins?
Madam President, recently several trustees and MCSD staff were able to attend the soft opening ceremony of the Kids Discovery Station here in Merced. It's a great up and coming educational and fun learning environment that is meant to spark a child's learning and imagination about the world around them. This children's science and experiential museum is located at 350 West Yosemite Avenue in Merced, uh, at the MCOE building across from Merced College. The station is also located in our attendance boundary. As an elementary school district, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to discuss how MCSD and the Discovery Station may partner and support each other. Dr. Tokman provided me with the information on the attachment and the agenda. However, tonight is just a discussion item to hear the board's thoughts, questions and/or directions for staff. And I look forward to engaging with you. I want to make sure that what we do and what we choose to do, I can bring back at a future board meeting for an actual decision, but I wanted to make sure there was opportunity for the board to discuss the idea or the concept basically in public.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So first I'd just like to say that I am frustrated, disappointed, embarrassed that Merced City School District is not one of the founding partners. And I know that that sentiment is shared by many in this room. And it was through a number of circumstances had I will just say that, that opportunity being lost that I welcome a discussion about our participation with the Kids Discovery Station as a partner. So I'll open it up. Trustee Kazakos.
Thank you. Um, I, I unfortunately wasn't able to go when they had their opening and they invited us. I had already a previous engagement. So unfortunately I was unable to attend. I did see all the pictures and my fellow board members that were there and other members of the community that were there and it looked like a wonderful, exciting place where not only children would get a lot of enjoyment out of that, but their family members, I think, would too, and taking them as well. I would be interested in some sort of partnership where we could like how we've had the STEAM Center in pre-COVID times where we were able to send students classes, grade levels, groups of kids there to you know, enjoy, enjoy themselves at the STEAM Center and have special different activities and learning opportunities. So I would be interested in something ongoing, a relationship that we could have that we would be able to send our students there for a similar type of thing. So that's something that I, those are my, those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Trustee Espinoza.
Um, I like it. I think it would have to be for like an effective price. I think really, you know, it is like, in, in a way, it's like project-based learning. It takes your content and you click them. I like that they align to standards. But I think in general, I think it, the, the, it would have to be for the right price. I think when we were looking in the admin files, the, the prices seemed a little high to me, maybe just some information that why it was priced accordingly. And then maybe some reasoning as to, oh, you know, I was just thinking maybe I, I would prefer those benefits to go into like the classroom or the schools or how, how could we bring, you know, the value that we see that into it? But I do agree, like community partnership is definitely valuable resource. And just hopefully we can get it for like an effective price where the, the investment is, is, is best spent there as opposed to other places to benefit students.
Thank you, Trustee Brooks.
Um, I have a beautiful daughter that I was able to take with me when I went and my daughter looks like my beautiful wife. So I, I have an aim to please. She was able to play with the robotics there and she was so excited and so amazed and it goes to what Jesse was saying as far as getting kids excited about learning. And I directly seen my daughter being excited about learning. And I think I think we should afford every kid that opportunity. And my only question is, what, what would our role be in the partnership and what does it look like? But as far as a partnership, definitely. Anything hands-on educational like that, we definitely should have a partnership and it should be consistent, you know, as far as our children being able to access that. And it should be consistent as far as all children being able to access that, children and their families. So yes, but what, what does our role, what is our role and what does it look like?
Thank you, Trustee Brooks. Trustee Smith?
Thank you. I share, I share President Oliveris Kidwell's wish that we could turn back the clock, be more supportive at the beginning, but obviously they did great without us. So, you know, we're, we're here now. You know, look, the, the kids, the, the target audience for the Kids Discovery Station are our kids. Those are our parents. There's a lot of our parents who are on the board of that station that put it together. I would like to see a natural partnership grow that's durable for years. I agree with Ms. Kazakos. I think that there's a way to do it such that, you know, we're using it as part of our teaching and learning. Maybe a fun way. I think there's also a model like what President Oliveris Kidwell is involved with in terms of getting library books in the hands of third graders. It's an, it's another resource that our kids can go to. Professor Tokman impressed me when she explained, and I didn't understand all the specifics, but each of those exhibits that the kids play with are on standard for science and math. I think at that point, I would like to hear from our educators, what are some ways to collaborate so that our kids and our teachers are benefited by this enriching asset that we have in Merced? I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to go the the more straightforward route of, of a check for a sponsorship. I would, I would want to hear from council about concerns about a gift of public funds. And I also probably more importantly than that, though, I, I'm not sure that a check really says enough. I think we need to find constructive ways to invest our kids in the station rather than just making a donation and moving along the way. Those are my thoughts, but I appreciate Mr. Collins bringing this forward. I'd like to see something tangible happen in the near future.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I agree with the trustees and their statements so far. I think that one of the major concerns I have is ensuring that this absolute treasure, because it really is a treasure. I was able to play. And as an adult, it was fun. So I can only imagine what students, our students will think. But it's not just about the students that live near the facility, which is on Yosemite Avenue across from Merced College. It has to be accessible to our students that don't live near it. And any partnership that we would have would have to ensure access to all of our students. And in, I agree specifically with Trustee Smith in that our partnership has to be, we have a lot of expertise in our district and a lot of people that are willing to help. And in, in concrete ways with service versus just dollars to be a more meaningful impact to our community. A collaborative partnership, access to the facility. That, that being said, that doesn't preclude the thought of a financial partnership. But I, I would ask what that means initially upfront? What it means for future spending? Is it a one-time cost? Is it an ongoing cost? And are there ways that we can contribute more fully versus just with a check, as Trustee Smith mentioned? Those are the concerns that I have.
Great feedback. And it's exactly why I wanted to have you have the opportunity to have a discussion on the topic. So just to kind of repeat some of those things so that I have kind of just clear as far as work with staff and things like that, that a few things, one, equity and access for all. So opportunity, you know, that's huge. Second, check on the financial piece of it in terms of district to organization. Absolutely. Third, making sure that we are understanding and clear about, well, if it's this, then what are we, what does that look like for all? Meaning what are we getting or what are, and what are they doing? Very clear planning. And I think that that comes with discussion and negotiations, basically about this, negotiation is such a formal word, but really just the idea of that discussion. So, so long as, as if the district is contributing this, then this is what equity and access looks like for our kids. So I think I have from the feedback, if there's anything that maybe I missed, I have the feedback that I need to go back and work with Dr. Tokman and her team, our district staff, to get some more answers for a future board discussion or maybe even a future board vote.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
You're welcome.
So moving on to item ten A, ten B, and ten C. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that these are, we've, the board and the public have had an opportunity to review the documents. These are a first reading, each of them. And we could approve them as a slate if there were a motion to do so. Is that correct?
You could. You could do that as a slate and Dr. Seaton's also ready to address any specific questions on any particular one of the policies as well. So it can go both ways. You can even do the questions on any of them and then do it as a slate as well. So there's opportunity for that.
So I think the first thing that I would do is I would ask Dr. Seaton to read the recommended action and the background of each one, please.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees. I actually have prepared a bit of a, an organizing background that's not presented here, if I may read that to you.
Yes, thank you.
To give you some background as to why they're coming before you tonight. Federal and state laws require the California Department of Education to monitor implementation of categorical programs operated by local educational agencies. These agencies are responsible for creating and maintaining programs that meet minimum fiscal and programmatic requirements. So each year in the state of California, approximately 132 LEAs, that could be school districts or charter schools, they fit the definition, are selected for these reviews. The LEAs are selected using specific criteria, including the size of our programs, our fiscal analysis, past compliance history of the organization, and our continuous improvement. In 2019, MCSD was selected for a federal program monitoring review, they're called FPM reviews. We were again selected in 2021. In both reviews, a successful, a review of the district's program included the Title I program, the English Learner Program, and our early learning and care programs resulted. These resulted in no unresolved findings in the district. Yeah, with the, and the reauthorization of, you mentioned it tonight, the educate, Secondary Educational, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is now called the Every Student Succeeds Act. Like, there came a number of new provisions to advance equity throughout the nation's schools. And in California, this resulted in a new FPM interest instrument called the Equity, Education Equity Instrument. We underwent a review with that instrument both in 2019 and 2021. In both years, there were unresolved findings within the district. In 2019, there was a considerable amount of work around board policy to rectify that, those findings. And in 2021, we are now faced with another opportunity to address those findings that were a result of that review. So tonight, what you have before you are three policies that really are focusing on what that instrument is looking at, which is evaluating our policies and practices as they relate to the prohibition of discrimination, harassment, intimidation, bullying, suicide prevention and student safety, immigration and citizenship, and equal opportunity to curriculum, counseling, activities, clubs, athletics, and all programs for all students. So these three policies are presented to you as part of the work that's ahead of us this year that's necessary to meet these requirements as outlined by the California Department of Education's Education Equity FPM Instrument. And they can be presented as a slate, and I will read all three to you. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the attached revision of Board Policy 5145.3 as a first reading. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the attached revisions to Board Policy 5145.7 as a first reading. And it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the attached revisions to Board Policy 1312.3 as a first reading. And I can address any questions. I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have. I may need to take notes and come back to you with revisions in a second reading.
Thank you, Dr. Seaton. Just as a matter of background, these revisions came about also, we have, we subscribe to a service from CSBA. Would you please describe that service to Trustee Brooks or any of our other trustees that may not be aware of it?
Absolutely. Board policies are informed by California's law, referred to the California Education Code. And California School Boards Association actually provides a repository of model board policies and the language within those policies in a repository that we refer to as GAMIT. I do not know what those initials stand for. However, we rely on this resource, as do many districts do through, most districts throughout the state do, to provide us guidance with what needs to be in those policies. We don't copy them verbatim, but we consider what's important within the district and our circumstances. A good example is in some districts larger than ours, they may have multiple people holding many positions. And these, in these documents, you'll see us referring to our Title IX Coordinator is also our compliance officer. And in a larger district, that may be designated amongst many people. And so those guidelines are provided to us in that, in those guidelines from CSBA's GAMIT repository.
So GAMIT helps us keep current. It does the hard, the heavy lifting. And then we personalize it or customize it, I guess is a better word, for our district and the size and our specific populations.
What's bringing forth our recommendations or requirements?
I don't understand your questions.
The information that they provide telling us, you know, the things that we need to be doing, are they recommendations? Because I heard you.
Yes, they're, yes, sir, they're recommendations. However, they'll be clear in the guidance when I'm reading it as to whether or not ED Code is requiring it to be present. Or, yeah, present not only in the policy, but also in our, how we play out those policies through our actions within the district. So, so the law will dictate what's required, whereas their CSBA's documentation is a recommendation.
And based on the information, all three of these are required?
All three of these policies are required if we wish to be compliant with the federal program monitoring that we go through. These three policies are specifically named, for example, in that federal program monitoring tool that the California Department of Education evaluates us on each year. There's an expectation that we have a policy, each one of these three policies, among others.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Trustee Kazakos, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Trustee Smith?
I have some questions. Thank you. Dr. Seaton, I appreciate your presentation. I'm in favor of making these changes as a general matter. I've got some concerns with the drafting. Maybe I'm just missing something, so I want to see if you can figure this out.
Please provide your, your information.
And I don't, I don't mean to be socratic, but I think I can get one question. Where do I look to find the definition of sexual harassment in these policies? I'm not trying to get you. I'll tell you what my concern is. And I know this is a first reading, so I hope this is taken as constructive feedback. These are, the first two of these we've been asked to consider in particular. Board Policy 41, 5145.3 and 0.7. They set out basically offenses, bullying, sexual harassment, other things that are then referable to a, a compliance officer who is a enforcement officer for the district, and they can be referred for discipline. So I think that these policies need to define the conduct that we're, we're outlining, that we're finding objectionable. And on the one hand, I think we all know what bullying and sexual harassment means. But on the other hand, right, the problem is that if the tribunal who's deciding whether or not somebody has committed one of these offenses doesn't have the definition codified in our board policy, it's going to be up to that person whether or not the accused has actually committed the crime or not, right? This is one of the reasons we went to war with England a long time ago. So I could be misreading the document, perhaps somehow it's implied that I go to another code section to find those definitions. But although I support this, I'd probably be more comfortable sending these policies back so that we could define sexual harassment, bullying, and the other forbidden activities that are at the top of board, proposed Board Policy 5145.3.
So if I may.
Please.
Associated with each board policy within the district is what we call administrative regulations. And within those administrative regulations, it provides us an opportunity, which may be in a more, more, and maybe it's in both places. I'm just providing this as an, as an option, where it would be very important to define both of those that you mentioned, as well as other offenses that may be mentioned within each one of these board policies. Because along with these board policies, in order to become compliant with this law around, that I'm mentioning here, we also have to have operational regulations within the district that will be multiple pages long, that accompany the board policies and provide greater definition and step-by-step procedures for how we will go about implementing the policies. In addition to that, we will be doing work this year on building a website that will provide more accessible language, where policies are not really what I would call accessible language for most because it's so reflective of the law. And there is an expectation for us that we are providing information both on websites and in communication to students and families to provide information in language that is accessible to understand how they can go about making complaints to, to the district.
I wonder, Dr. Smith, I know, I know you, you're a lawyer, so therefore, you know, those things, these things come naturally to you. So I wonder in this particular case with, when, with respect to defining the offenses, if maybe we take a look at the ARs, as Dr. Seaton has said, but take a look at the policy in conjunction with the ARs and maybe have even the board's council take a quick look to make sure it's defensible before we bring it back as a second reading? If that would, if that would help the board as a whole kind of feel comfortable with that?
I mean, it may, so to Dr. Seaton's point. I mean, I completely agree, right? There's, the operational guidance is always bigger. It's what you actually need when you're in a room doing the thing, right? And so I'm fully comfortable with incorporating that by reference or citing to it. It's just that what I don't see is a citation to the larger operational text. Right? I don't think it's here. So for me to support the policy, and I want to, I, I want, I wanted to be clear that the board is pointing to the definition of these offenses that we say are forbidden.
So just for my, my guidance and the direction I should take, is your recommendation to still provide, because there are many, many complaints upon which could be brought forth in these, that if I were to start building in definitions of what they are according to California ED Code, it could add pages and pages to the board policies. Is that the direction or just to focus on the two that you've mentioned, sexual harassment and bullying?
Well, see here now, you've got me, you've got superior knowledge. I'm really only talking about the, what you've got already defined in the policy.
Okay.
Not going beyond that, but as referenced in this policy, quote, sexual harassment means blah.
Okay.
And if that isn't pragmatic, I would suggest, you know, see, see citation.
They are, I think it's pragmatic to define it, the sexual harassment within the board policy. I could do that. But when you look at the uniform complaint procedures, it, it's sort of all encompassing.
You're talking about 1312.3?
Correct.
Yeah, you know, the concern that I've just raised with you applies more so to the, the first two policies.
Okay, all right. Then I will bring forward to the board an embedded definition for sexual harassment and, and bullying specific to board policies 5145.3 and 5145.7.
So I have a question there. How, how would that differ from the description that is here? This says unlawful description, unlawful discrimination including, and then it gives a list that may result from physical, verbal, nonverbal. I'm afraid that if we define it too specifically, that we may not catch some behaviors that we haven't considered.
I think that, that is an excellent point. Thank you. I think that if I take the definition directly from the law, that will be protected in that way.
Okay. Is this not the, is this not the description from the law? The unlawful description, including discrimination, including discriminatory harassment, intimidation, or bullying may result from physical, verbal, nonverbal, or written conduct based on any of the categories listed above. It shall also include creation of a hostile environment, prohibited conduct is so severe, persistent, or pervasive, et cetera, et cetera.
I will do, I will reference the law and bring the law forward and be able to provide you, if there's more detail in the law that I have not reflected here. Without the law in front of me, I can't answer definitively if what you're reading to me is the complete definition from the law.
Okay. So what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee Smith or Dr. Seaton, that you will review the law in relation to what is written here. And if there are substantial, significant, or material differences, you will bring them back to the board for the second reading.
Yes, I, I will review the law and I will have it with me in the next, and do the comparison to see if we have any additional elements of definition that can be embedded within the policies.
Thank you. So that work, Mr. Collins, does not preclude us from moving forward with the motion?
It does not.
Thank you. If there's any further discussion, if there's no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Given Dr. Seaton's representation, I will move to approve the slate as presented today.
Thank you. I will second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Trustee Kazakos.
Aye.
Trustee Espinoza.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Aye to him and aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Seaton.
Thank you for the spirited conversation. I enjoyed it.
We move on to item 10D, Document Tracking Services License Agreement. I believe that is Dr. Seaton once again.
As you can see, the background there, you've read it for yourself. I would say the only difference this year is they've been quite, quite invaluable resource to us to provide us with templates to the multitude of emergency fund planning that we have done this year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the renewal contract with Document Tracking Services to provide web-based application services for 2021 and 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Seaton. Trustee Kazakos?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Espinoza.
No questions.
Trustee Brooks?
No questions.
Trustee Smith?
I share with Mr. Collins offline, their pricing model confuses me, but I've supported this many times in the past and I'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I have no further questions. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Trustee Kazakos.
Aye.
Trustee Espinoza.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Aye to him and aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 10E, Camp Green Meadows. Dr. Seaton?
Thank you, Madam President. You've also read the background for this in brief. We recently changed from our original plan of the three-day, two-night field trip to a one-day field trip based on the feasibility of being able to move forward with a three-day, two-night. It just, it was unfeasible due to, to the need for, for staffing supports, for parental supports, for the expected or anticipated possibility for many, many students choosing not to go away on a field trip for an extended period of time, especially an overnight trip. So we've, the, the item presented to you tonight is for a one-day trip. We really wanted to get, provide all of our students in sixth grade the opportunity to get back to Camp Green Meadows. And so it is a long day that we're providing for them, but we're, we're excited about it. We've also asked Merced County Office of Education to offer up the virtual option for any students and for our teachers to be able to provide to our students in the event that they choose not to attend the one-day trip. So it is recommended that So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the contract with Merced County Office of Education for the use of Camp Green Meadows Outdoor School for the 2021 and 2022 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Seaton. A couple of clarification points, points of clarification. Any student, if their teacher chooses not to take the in-person option, will that student be able to attend in person?
Yes, they will. We will make sure they are able to go with another teacher who is taking their students on.
Thank you. And any teacher that chooses not to attend in person has the option to do, to do the virtual.
That, that's correct.
And all of those scenarios, instead of listing them out, I will just ask that every student, family, and teacher has the ability to choose either in-person or virtual.
That's correct.
Thank you. Trustee Kazakos?
As an MCSD student myself, I remember very well my own trip to Camp Green Meadows. I'm very excited that this is an opportunity that we get to extend to our, all of our sixth graders. It hasn't always been the case that we've been able to offer this, and so I'm very glad that we'll get to offer this. Though it's not the traditional Camp Green Meadows that we all know in our district of having, you know, those couple nights, sleep in a cabin with all of your friends. I hope that they'll thoroughly enjoy this experience as well, and I'm glad that we're going to be, that us and MCOE are going to be able to be flexible to allow those virtual options when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza?
Yes, I, I like this as well. I went to Camp Green Meadows. It's a great experience. I'm glad we're able to put it together and make it work in, in any regard. No questions.
Thank you. Trustee Brooks?
Unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to go to Camp Green Meadows like everyone else. So I have, I do have two questions. What is the ultimate goal of the day? I mean, what, what should, what should children come, come away with?
Well, first and foremost, deep and, and for some, a brand-new appreciation for the outdoors and what it provides us and, and the learning experiences that can be provided there. So they're, they're also engaging all day long in hands-on learning, science learning, standards-based learning from trained staffers that provide that training or provide that instruction and a whole lot of student interaction, which to me is one of the most important reasons for the trip and all field trips that I've been advocating for this year is for students to be able to re sort of kindle that ability to connect on a social and an emotional level that's positive for our students.
Trustee Smith?
So we gotta go up there by Fred to play Gaga Ball.
By the way, we, we could, we would love you as a volunteer.
I would love to. I would love to. I would love to have that experience.
That'd be cool.
Obviously, I'm disappointed, but I get it. I think, you know, we gotta get our kids up there by hook or by crook. You know, people forget that until five years ago, we'd stopped going. And now we're, we're still only going for half a week. I would have preferred by now we'd be having a conversation about going back to full weeks for our sixth graders. My expectation is we'll talk about that for next year. In the meantime, I noticed the contract lapses in April, and I understand why. My understanding is that MCOE runs a, like a makeup couple of weeks at the end of the school year. I don't know what they're planning to do, but, you know, we might be in a different situation in the world and the, and COVID and vaccination or whatever. I appreciate adding to the do-do list, but if staff could reach out to MCOE and just see what the availability might be to get our kids up for an overnight trip if space is available, you know, not, not their class per se, but if they have spaces available, if our students could maybe on a first-come, first-served basis or something, take advantage of that, because we all know you're only in sixth grade once. And so any opportunity for our kids, I'd like, I'd like to make that available.
Okay, so you're asking that I do some, staff does some research on, on the availability?
First fact-check me, right? Is this, does this makeup window actually exist? What does it look like? And is there a way that our kids can take advantage of it?
Okay.
But thank you, Dr. Seaton.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. So my daughter was in the years that it was not offered, but MCOE did have an opportunity for students to take a one-week trip either by scholarship or by, or paid for by parents. So my daughter got to go that way. My son also got to go, but he got to go as a normal. No, I'm sorry. He also took it the two week, the week after school was out. So that opportunity is available. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, but it's, it's well-attended. So I also have to say that I was a Camp Green Meadows alum. I went in fifth grade when my year, when I was in school. But I also served as a counselor for four years in the same cabin that I stayed in as a student. Fur Cabin is the best cabin. I will make certain that everybody knows that uncontested.
No, it's Banzanita.
Fur Cabin. It's fur.
Actually, it is Fur Cabin. That was my cabin as well, so it's for sure Fur Cabin.
Thank you, Trustee Kazakos, for, for supporting me in that, in that well-known fact that fur is the best cabin. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I just have one more comment to make. Sorry. If, if we do look into actual overnight camping, my, I would only just say that if we're going, and it's probably limited amount of students, I'm sure, because they probably just have those last couple of days or weeks or whatever it is. But I would just be concerned about students who didn't have that financial ability to attend. Would this be something that we would, that we would be paying for as a district? Or who would we open that up to? That would be my concern, and that was why previous board had stopped Camp Green Meadows at one point because everybody wasn't able to go. It wasn't an equitable trip. And so that would just be the comments that I would make if we do visit sending kids overnight.
So to her point, I mean, I was suggesting that we pay for it.
Did I hear all, all sixth grader?
Well, this trip this year, yes, yes, sir, all students. We have the luxury of funds available to us this year, but, you know, thinking about, you know, years where money is more slim, a, a full week overnight trip for all sixth graders is quite, comes with a heavy, hefty price tag, but this year, all students.
But we don't necessarily know that all sixth-grade students, if there was a chance at the end of whatever the Camp Green Meadows term is, that those, it would be available for all students for that capacity, right?
Yeah, so to address your, your original point, the research that I'll do for Trust, Trustee Shane that he was mentioning, Smith, Trustee Smith, sorry. Getting too late in the evening. Absolutely. I, I'm an advocate for equity. I, I would not be comfortable in any way with making something not available to some students. So we'd have to figure out a way, either through raising funds or lottery, or however we decide to, you know, make it fair. You know, that you just, you just can't, in, in the, it's not the right thing. I, I don't know how else to address it, but absolutely that if we had a situation where we had an opportunity for a week-long trip available to us for a limited number of students, we would come together and find a way to make it and have equitable access for that, that minimal opportunity.
Dr. Seaton, we did have an educational foundation that was created specifically to address that specific need. I'm not certain what happened to it. I was on the board of it, and then it kind of dissolved over time. So that might be some of the research that you do is to find out what happened to that foundation, if it's still in existence. And if we can, we took donations, and they were, it was.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No.
I was just saying that the, the foundation does still exist, but it's obviously been.
Commandeered for other uses.
Quiet. It's been quiet for eighteen months, for sure. The previous foundation board made the goal of musical instruments that, the purpose of that fundraising, but obviously, if that's able to be resurrected, that's possible. But we will, Dr. Seaton, we'll get the answers to those questions in terms of the end of the school year with a focus on equity. And might I say, before you, before you vote trustees, maybe we should also suggest a day for all five trustees to go have a Gaga Ball tournament up at, at Meadows and see which cabin is really the best. That might work. It might be fun. You never know.
Yeah.
Okay. And so pricing as well, if you could, please, so that we understand what the target goal might be.
Absolutely.
With percentages, you know, because we know that many of our students will be able to go. What the percentage of students that may not be able to go, some various tier structures, I think. Thank you. If there are no further questions, we will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I will second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Trustee Kazakos?
Aye.
Trustee Espinoza?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Aye to him and aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Seaton.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We move on to the events calendar. I trust, I trust, I trust the trustees. I trust that all on the board have had the opportunity to review the events calendar. We can move forward to the governance calendar. Our Facility Services Report is on for September. We are now in October. Why does it say September?
Did I miss the events calendar? I did.
It's on the page.
All right, I know. Sorry. I've had a long couple of days. I would appreciate at a future board meeting, an update from the Safety Committee for the full board. Kind of what, what are the issues being discussed? What's going on?
Thank you, Trustee Smith.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to the governance calendar, it says Facility Services Report is September. Can somebody explain?
Yeah, I, I think it's just a mistake, our, our fault, and we will get that fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. At this time, I will open up for Board Member Roundtable, which would include Board Member Communications, information, and requests for future board agenda items. Trustee Kazakos?
Just my broken record message to remind not only our families, but our community members to please be safe and careful when you're driving in and around our schools, especially as the weather begins to change and it's darker in different times of the morning and evening than we're used to, and it gets rainy and foggy. Just a reminder for people to be careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kazakos. Trustee Espinoza?
Just sending a thank you out to everyone who, who plays a part in, in, in making sure Merced City opens opportunities for students in that conclusion report.
Thank you. Trustee Brooks?
I do want to maybe actually visually see the equity plan and the literacy plan.
Thank you, Trustee Brooks. Trustee Smith?
Thank you. Going to reiterate requests that I've made at prior board roundtable sessions. I'd like to see the development of the Communications Office continue. The office was created during the pandemic by a prior board grant you, but because we heard the challenge from our community that we were not communicating authentically with all of our families. And we've gotten the PIO side of the Communication Office, it seems going to full bore. We need Cece to be staffed. We need her to be figuring out how to communicate with our Spanish-speaking families. We need to stop getting calls into the board meeting that our Spanish and Mongue-speaking parents don't understand what's happening at the board. It's impractical for this body to not conduct business in a language substantially other than English. This has been years that we've heard this complaint. We've got an expert in-house. I know that every, we have a lot of demands, and we are at times just trying to keep the ship going. But I feel like this important priority has gotten lost. And so without, without pounding the table, I would appreciate an update about the timeline to building out the Communications Office to address these concerns our community has presented to us about an inability at times to authentically communicate with all of our families. So with that plea, I will cede the floor, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Anyone else that we address, the dress code? At an upcoming board meeting, Merced Union High School District has just issued a new updated without gender bias that is more accessible to our families and their income levels. That gives the flexibility for the types of clothing that is available in our local area at a price point that our families can, can achieve. I feel that we, Merced City School District needs to update our dress code. It still has archaic references to fingertip length and such. So if we could bring that. I would like to reiterate to any of members of the public that if you are not able to speak to us tonight, or you could not get through your message, to please send your comments via email to all trustees as we do read all comments and consider all input from our community members. If there is nothing further, tonight, we will adjourn in honor of Taku Mua Liah, also known as Jean Mua, who was a critical member of our Merced City School District. We adjourn in his honor. Thank you.